Board of Supervisors for August eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. August eighteenth, is the right date?
September.
September eighteenth.
That's close.
Yeah.
What are you trying to move the date ahead?
Yeah, I want to go back a month, Frank. Roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Maxman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Right? Here, I have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or been?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, public comments? Anybody from the public that like to comment about anything other than what's on the agenda? Come to the podium and state your name and address, sir.
Good morning, my name is Jerry Hagman. I live at three zero five two San Salvador Drive and I'm here just to thank you three times as a citizen. Well, actually first as a union member, I want to thank you for supporting your employees, but also I was just over at the election office and I know things get political and I believe you've always been very good stewards of the county's money. We all pay taxes, so thank you for that. And also, as a veteran, I want to thank especially two of you for your active involvement in the honor flights and supporting veterans. You all do that. And then, just as a citizen, I would like you to continue to push for local control, wind, solar and wind power, everything you can do to keep our environment safe, like up at the scout camp, I mean, that all helps. So, thanks for your efforts, three times.
Thank you, Mr. Hagman.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Next is claim of payments, resolution for the approved expenditures for the county. Susan?
The county's expenditures this week total four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents, four three seven, one three nine point eight three.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, resolution adopted, approve the expenditures for Country View Care Facility. Susan?
The expenditures that we will pay this week for Country View total fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirteen cents, five five nine seven three point one three. We're going to continue to hold the payment to the county for benefits unless we have enough in the bank balance to do that, but currently, there's only five hundred thousand in that balance, so.
How much are you holding back so far?
We just billed them for August benefits, so it should be about six hundred thousand for July and August, two months, right now.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Right? Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a presentation promoting the toxic materials and electronics recycling drop-off event by Lindsay Anderson. Good morning, Lindsay.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to present this morning. Our two-person Waste Track education team is a partnership between the County Solid Waste Management Commission and the County Conservation Board, and it is that time of year again for folks to get rid of certain items from their homes. The household hazardous materials drop-off and electronics recycling event will take place this Saturday, September twenty-second. It is co-sponsored by the Solid Waste Management Commission and the city of Cedar Falls, and our Waste Track education team does all of the promotion, trying to get folks to come out to that event. The event will be held at the Cedar Falls Public Works Complex, which is located at two-two-zero-zero Technology Parkway in Cedar Falls, so it's the city's newer public works complex. It will be held from nine AM until two PM, and there are details at the Solid Waste Commission's website, which is wastetrack.org. So if you're not familiar with where the Public Works Complex is located, it's on Technology Parkway, just off of Hudson Road, so if you're familiar with where Target Distribution or the Central Rivers AEA is located, it is just to the west of there. And there is some road construction on Hudson Road near there, so just be aware of that as you're coming to the event. This drop-off is open to all Black Hawk County residents to bring items from their homes and garages. There's a list of approved items, and we'll talk about a few of those things, but for the most part, it's a free event. There are a few fees that may apply for certain electronics. So, a wide variety of household toxics will be accepted from fluorescent bulbs and propane tanks, old cleaners, clogged aerosol cans, a wide variety of things. The full list is on wastetrack.org, as well as items that are not accepted. And residents can also call our two-six-six-eight-seven-two-two hotline to ask us questions, too. If there are things on the list that you're not sure about, you have, give us a call and we can help you figure that out. Electronics will also be collected during the event, so anything with a screen, as far as CRTs, there, we kind of differentiate between the two different kinds of screens. If it's something like a tablet or flat-screen TV that you could hang on your wall, those items do not have a cathode ray tube in them, so there would be no charge for them. The bulkier style of TV and computer monitors that everybody's kind of moving away from now, those have what's called a cathode ray tube inside of those, and they're a little bit more costly for the commission to get recycled. So they do provide the first two for free for residents, and then, any CRTs above and beyond that, you would be asked to pay five dollars per CRT-containing device. They are not able to accept items from businesses, churches, schools, or nonprofits. It's strictly residential only, and you have to live in Black Hawk County. But as far as some of the free items go, any of the flat-screen computer monitors, TVs, laptops, game systems, for the most part, anything that has a cord or is battery-operated that you'd have in your home or your garage, they're just not able to accept appliances. So, this event is fully put on by volunteers. So there are our two-person education team and the landfill administrator and everybody else you see there, there'll be just a couple Cedar Falls Public Works there, folks there kind of running the forklifts and kind of moving materials around, but for the most part, this event is staffed by the fifty to sixty volunteers that are giving their time that morning, so when you go through the line, kind of give them a high five. Last spring, there were seven hundred and fifty-four vehicles that participated in the sleet and the rain and the snow and the wind that we had that day, and those volunteers unloaded thirty tons of electronics and they filled a hundred and four pallets, so we're very thankful for them giving their time. So here's just a few photos from what the beginning of the event looked like and kind of all of the pallets filled at the end of the event. We have about five slots left. If folks are still interested in volunteering for this event, please let my coworker Tammy know. You can call our hotline, two-six-six-eight-seven-two-two, if you are interested in wanting to help out. We have about five spots left, and just let her know maybe before Friday morning, just so we can get you on our list. You do have to be on the list, so we can make sure we have enough safety gear and everything for everyone, but we will be looking again in the spring for volunteers as well. The city of Cedar Falls requires that all loads coming to the event must be contained in a covered vehicle or secured so that nothing can fall out or blow off during the travel to this event. That is per city of Cedar Falls ordinance. This event is not able to accept appliances, so the electronics recycler is not permitted for appliances, so some of those would need to go elsewhere. If you do have appliances, you can contact your city regarding a bulk item pickup, or if you live in Waterloo, they actually have their buck day, citywide buck cleanup day coming up the following weekend on September twenty-ninth for some of those appliances and other large bulky items. Paint is not accepted at this event, you would just need to dry that out and throw it away, and there are steps on our website to show you how to do that as well, and they are not able to accept any materials from businesses. But we do have links on our website for hazardous material companies that a business could contact, as well as an electronics recycler would be happy to pick up those materials from their business. The Solid Waste Management Commission website, there are a couple of things on there that are easy to help folks figure out where things need to go, so we have an FAQ list on there, and you can kind of click on it. The first couple of questions are, who do I contact for a dumpster, you know, who do I call if my cart needs picked up, those types of questions, but if you scroll down farther, there's a list of eighty-some items that says, what do I do with my old mattress? What do I do with my microwave, those types of things, so folks can kind of scan through there or give us a call, too, if they're not sure. Some things that are not accepted at the event but are listed on how to get rid of there, medicine, microwave, scrills, mowers, all those things. The Solid Waste Commission also has a new electronics, or sorry, electronic newsletter. We just did one before this event, kind of letting folks know that it was coming up. If you would like to be contacted in the future about the date with the spring event, or some follow-up on how the event went, how many tons came through, that type of information, if you'd like to give us your name and your email address, and then just click which one of those you'd like to learn more about, general information, volunteering, education, or you can click all three, and we do not share any information with other parties. That is kept strictly in-house to let you know a couple of times a year what's going on with the Solid Waste Commission. And I just wanted to say thank you for letting me visit today, and we hope to see all of you this Saturday from nine AM until two PM at the Cedar Falls Public Works Complex, two-two-zero-zero Technology Parkway, and there are green wanted flyers at the exit, as well as at city halls and at libraries, too. If for some reason folks watching this don't have access to the internet, there are printed materials available as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is, opposed?
I'm sorry to bother everyone, just wanted to note that planning and zoning items, if anyone's here for any, that those will be moved to the twenty-fifth, and I'll be here next week. I wasn't quite sure if anybody would show up, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next is receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Morning.
Good morning, board. I wanted to update you on our paving projects. If you recall, we do have about eight or nine miles of paving that has just gotten started. Aspro did come to do the county work approximately a week ago. They have started paving on Zeneta and Eldora Roads. They started that project by doing an interlayer lift of asphalt, which is a highly elastic layer of asphalt, which should mitigate some of the cracking that tends to develop over the years. They have placed another layer of asphalt on top of that, and now they are waiting to, they are working on placing the final, the surface lift of asphalt. That will probably be done by the end of this week, weather permitting, and then, of course, there will be shouldering work. At the same time, over on Waverly Road, from the Cedar Falls city limits to the Janesville city limits, they have begun, the contractor has begun cold and place recycling there, and that work is about halfway finished, and it's a large paving train where they mill up the existing surface about four inches, and then they place it immediately back down with an additional bit of asphalt added to that. That road then needs to cure, it needs to sit there for probably a week, weather-dependent, so that the moisture can leave that layer. If we get rain, it's probably going to have to sit there maybe a week or two. Then that will be followed by some asphalt, some new asphalt on top of that. And then Elk Run Road is the last three miles from Donald Street up to Dunkerton Road, and that will be, that cold and place recycling will probably start next Monday, weather permitting. And then our final, our large bridge project on Finchford Road, that's going well, if you'd be interested in seeing that, the deck pour is probably going to take place later this week, so all the plywood is laid out there now, the green steel, the steel and the concrete is now being placed over these in the next few days, and we can certainly get you up to see that in the next, later this week, if you're interested in that. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Any other department heads or elected officials? Seeing none, move on to minutes approved for September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution?
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is reports update by Ben Delegardel during service, those urban services, wanted Washburn sanitary sewer. Morning, Ben.
Good morning. Good morning. I want to update you for June, July, and August today. For all three months, we did the daily monitoring of the flows and the monitoring of cell levels at the lagoon for all three months. We've maintained the lagoon grounds by mowing, trimming, and other grounds keeping tasks. We've sprayed the lagoon banks and the fence lines all three months. We had, normally we just do this in May and June, but we had some weeds that were breaking through our spray that we were putting down, so we used a different formula later in the year here, so everything is looking better now, but had a little bit of a tough time with weeds this summer. Back in June, we did some rodent control, and we had the quarterly influence sample taken. We had five service calls and eleven locates for June. We'll move up to the July, where we had another round of rodent control, there was a badger making some big holes in our lagoon banks, and those structures need to be protected because of the water they're holding is quite a little bit of water, so we definitely make sure that we get the grounds taken care of as far as rodents. We had six service calls, and I hope you're all sitting down, we had forty locates in July, four-zero. Thirty-four of those came from a project that a contractor was doing, I believe for Mid-American Energy. They have some power poles leaning over in town, and they were putting a support race to the side of all those, and the request on the, all these locates was that there is a flag and an okay sign from every contractor. That way, when they come to do the work, they know that this one's been checked, this one is good to go. So, a lot of them were in backyards, areas where we couldn't really get to easily, did our best and got all those taken care of. I haven't seen that they've completed all of those yet, but hopefully we don't have to locate those again. Sometimes these projects, they get located, and then a month later, they've been busy with something else, and because of the rain or whatever, the lines are mowed over, the flags are pulled up, and we have to go back and do those, but.
Over the years, there's been a lot of those locates. Are they duplicates? I mean, there isn't that many.
We don't get too many duplicates. One I can tell you about earlier this summer that I remember doing a duplicate on was on Oak Road between Washburn Road and Laporte Road, where the lagoon is on that road. There is a project to take power from, not sure the name of the power station, but it's north of Fork Road, and it's going to go all the way down to Laporte, following that area, and they had stakes about three inches away from where I was getting locates at, so I made them come out and meet me there so that we could move their stakes or their planned locations towards the road, five feet. Still not one-hundred percent comfortable with that, but I told them before they do the project that they need to contact me, and we may have further steps we can take to make sure that we're not going to have an issue in that area. That's a six-inch sewer line in that area, it's a pressure sewer system line, so it's going to be a major issue if we were to have that hit, so I did go out for duplicate on that one. As far as other duplicates, I can't speak to any that I know of that were unavoidable, I would say. We've had some that, yeah, contractors called again. One time, we had a guy wanted to put a tree in his yard, and he called the locate, and then the contractor called the locate, and then I think someone else called locate for landscaping three weeks later, something like that, so there's been some, but as far as duplicates go, we don't see a whole lot of duplicates. These were thirty-four individual poles that all had, they're all marked with an identifying number, so we were careful on knowing which ones they were going to be working on, and it was mostly pretty obvious that they were leaning over, so it was a three-day period that those all came in, so it was a very busy time for us getting all those located, but that's not a number we normally see for locates, so I wanted to kind of touch on that with you guys. So, any questions about July? Basically, just routine, you know, monitoring of the cells, sprayed the lagoon banks, did the mowing, rodent control. Oh, and in July, we did check the pump system throughout every station, the electrical and the well itself, so. For August, monitor daily flows, cell levels, we did MORs in each month as well, I didn't mention that yet. We did mowing and trimming of the grounds, spraying the lagoon banks in August, that was the different formula that we used to get some of the heavier weeds taken care of. We had five service calls in August and nine locates in August, and that's all I have for monthly updates. The pump number, the quantity we have is eight, currently good to use. We have two being rebuilt that will be good to use, so that's a total of ten, and we have one that is being tested and looked at. We believe we will have that available pending some other failed test, but, so that gives us eleven, likely eleven pumps in our inventory to use, so I like to keep that number above ten. Don't want to request every month to buy five pumps, so Tom and I talked, I think next time we'll do ten as a request, and keep it between eight and eighteen, maybe, you know, somewhere in there. How you guys feel about that? At this point, with buying the refurbished pumps with the new motor, the warranty on those is not such a factor, whereas before, we were worried about having twenty in stock, and before we would even put it in, the warranty had expired, so with these, I think we can afford to have, you know, ten to fifteen, eighteen, twenty, around something like that, so.
Still got quite a few old ones out there yet, don't we?
Yeah, I would say quite a few. We just took another one out probably two weeks ago. I remember seeing one that came out, that was an original pump. I would guess between twenty to thirty pumps are still original out there.
I would have thought we had more.
It's getting down to where we're taking one out every month, six weeks, something like that. Without spending six hours in front of a computer figuring out all of our service calls we've ever done, I probably can't give you an exact number, but I would be surprised if there's over forty still out there that are original, but we're looking at eighteen and a half, nineteen years now that the system's been up, so it's kind of, the lifespan is getting to the end now, so. And then I was going to talk about, a little bit more about the quantity of pumps we have in stock and how many we're using up, so as you can see, five service calls, six service calls, five service calls, we're getting five to six a month, and that's on a monthly basis, you know, it doesn't slow down in the winter, so you're looking at sixty service calls a year, around sixty, sixty-five, and we can rebuild about one-third, or two-thirds, I'm sorry, two-thirds to three-fourths, something like that, in that range, so then you're looking at maybe ten to twenty pumps a year that we're going to be buying in those, so hopefully we can maintain that failure rate or lower it, but if we do start to go up, I'm going to be requesting more pumps more frequently, so.
Is there any kind of price point break for, you know, numbers for?
I wouldn't think so. On the refurbished ones, we could try for brand-new ones, but those are almost twice the price. So, yeah, I understand your question, I just don't think, unless you wanted to go with brand-new pumps.
No, I think we all agree that we've got.
Yeah, I've been satisfied with the quality of what we've gotten. I can ask, but I don't believe doing twenty at a time would probably help us at all, so.
When you order the rebuilt pumps, how long does it take to get them?
Once, they're usually nearly ready. If you guys say, yeah, give us the request, they're usually two to three weeks, they'll be ready for purchase, and then the payment happens shortly after that, so once they're paid for, they're yours, but normally, they're all ready by the time, by the time the payment's made, so. If you said, give us a request next week, I would think three weeks we would have all of those ready. So what happens is, we need to go through the piles of old pumps to get good parts from those used pumps, gather those, put them together, get the new pump unit from the supplier, so getting all those pieces together would take two and a half, three weeks for a set of five to ten.
Thank you.
Yep, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on to contracts and agreements, this is a resolution that the twenty-eighty agreement between Black Hawk County and the Consolidated Public Safety Communication Center be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on this item?
There's very minor changes in this twenty-eighty agreement. One of them is making a correction, going from two years to three years to look at the average, and then there's a change in the way that the cities and county is billed. It's been under emergency management, and we would transfer this to the county auditor's office to do that billing.
Thank you, Mr. Maxman.
And then, all the cities need to sign off on it as well, and I think they're in the process of doing that.
Thank you. Any questions for Frank? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a motion that the personnel requisition for Personnel Director, Part-Time for Civil Service Commission be approved.
I'm on it. Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion that the travel request submitted by Deb Bogger, Human Resource Director, be approved, Director Chair to sign for Sam, seventy-five dollars to attend the Employment Law Client Seminar in West Des Moines on October twelfth.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on this one? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution that the suspension request by Diana Ollinger on taxes owed for eighteen, nineteen installments in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars be approved, and under the Code, Port Twenty-seven Point Eight, the Code of Iowa, for County Treasurer be authorized and directed to adjust her records accordingly.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on this? Any questions for Rita? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, resolution adopted. This resolution is a subpoena requested by Bev Beaumont on taxes owed for eighteen, nineteen installments in the amount of four hundred and eighty-six dollars be approved pursuant to Port Twenty-seven Point Eight, the Code of Iowa, and the County Treasurer be authorized to direct to adjust her records accordingly.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a motion direct to County Auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh five on October second, Order Room Two-oh-one courthouse, under proposed ordinance number seventy-seven dash two-twenty for a request submitted by Kelly Bush, nineteen oh two East Rock Road, to rezone three hundred and three, two acres from A to C M.
Check.
Moved in second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This resolution that the taxes due and payable on a submitted persons as indicated, including special assessments and rates of charges, including interest fees and costs in accordance with the provision of Port Twenty-seven Point Nine, Code of Iowa will be suspended, and the future property taxes on property owned by persons will be suspended for such time as persons, remaining owners of the parcels, and during the period of persons receiving assistance.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution that the bridge embargo, restoring vehicle and load limits to the maximum legal limit for structure seven six eight six oh, crossing Beaver Creek, located on Butler Road between Beaver Valley Road and Westbrook Road, be approved, and the removal of signs for the structures recommended by Catherine Nicholas County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Chuck, could you please turn the TVs back on? I wanted to show you a few photos of the repairs. So our bridge crew was able to finish this work last week, and we were able to take the embargo off. You'll notice that these photos were taken late last week, we still have the signs, the embargo signs up. Those have been taken down. The work included driving new steel H-pile, and what we did in this case was this spot and then a spot over here in the other wheel path, the bridge crew cut a square in the bridge deck, and we pushed the rebar out of the way, cut the rebar and pushed it out of the way, and then they're able to drive the steel H-pile. And then they're able to drive the steel H-pile under the bridge. And here's, here's one of the steel pile, and here's the other one, and then out at each sides of the bridge, then we drive another steel pile. And what we, what is then done is this large helper beam is then moved in underneath the deck on those H-pile. And then that is what is supporting the structure now on the abutments. And we did this on both the north and the south abutment. Here's another view of the helper beam. And that way, we're taking the load off of those, those older timber pile. You can see that there are some cracking. They have absorbed moisture. They're not carrying as much load as they, they have in the past, is what they were designed to carry. That is why we, we had to place the restriction on the loading as well, on the bridge as well, excuse me. And then this is just looking downstream at more of the bridge. So now both, both the piers and both the abutments, so all four pieces, connections of the structure are, have been shored up, and it is now open. It has been reopened to, there are no restrictions now for any type of load, as long as it's a legal load. And I would just recommend that you vote to take off the embargo. And the Butler County Engineer is also recommending to their board that this take place, because it is a county-line bridge. I believe you said to us, Kathy, too, it was not only completed but inspected. Yes, the, once the bridge is, is, the work is finished, Ryan did go out and inspect it, and then we, we report that back into our database, the federal database, that it has been restored to a legal load. And we're hoping to get another thirty years out of these repairs. You can see that the beams underneath this bridge were in really good condition, were in very good condition. And so is the deck is in, is in good condition as well. So this seemed like a good fix for this bridge.
Are you planning on supervising that reconstruction, then?
When it, thirty years? Most likely not. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Maxman?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes, resolution adopted. Any reports or information from the board?
We'll just let you know, next Tuesday, we're having our twenty-second flight out of Waterloo for honor flight. And we're still looking for veterans of World War II, Korea, or Vietnam, any, in that, any of that period to sign up for honor flights. You didn't, you don't have to be in country to be eligible to go on these honor flights. You just got to be of that era. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We are adjourned.